Welcome to our school board meeting. I will tell you this is being recorded within live streaming, but it will be placed on the website tomorrow. Being the April meeting after elections, I'm going to call the meeting to order and we'll be able to --
Pleased to meet you. Pleased to meet you.
To the flag of United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose name the verdict is just as strong.
And first order of business in the April meeting is reforming the board, so do I have a motion for a chairman of the board?
I'd like to nominate Bryce Larrabee, please. I'd like to second that.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Larrabee, will you serve?
I will.
All right, all vote please. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. And I will now turn the meeting over to Bryce for the election of the vice chairman and secretary.
All right. Let's see. You're on. Yep. Okay. Can't hear anything. No stage monitors tonight, sorry. All right. Do we have a motion for the vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Melanie.
A second. Generally accept if --
I would be honored to accept that.
Excellent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Do we have a motion for secretary?
I'd like to nominate Melanie, please.
Wait a second. Wait a second. Melanie will accept.
Yes, I will.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of Melanie as the secretary, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. The board is now reformed. And Dean, do we have any announcements?
None.
Excellent. All right. We have, folks, I mean, we have just the busiest, biggest meeting we have of the year. Even without discussing any books, this is always a very late night for us for a variety of reasons, just the way it is, it works with the April meeting. We have a motion on the minutes from March 9.
Is that moved?
A second. Any discussion?
I didn't see anything.
Hearing nothing, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Excellent. Special presentations, educational focus, nothing it looks like. All right. I've been on the board six years, this is the biggest crowd I've ever seen at one of our meetings actually in six years. And I understand most of you folks here, you want to talk about the book issue that's on our agenda. So the way this works is that we're about to have a public comment section, and that's your opportunity to comment on anything on the agenda. So if you want to talk about the book, that's your opportunity to make a public comment is at that time. It won't come up on the agenda for quite a while, there's a lot of other things that happened before it, and when the agenda item does come up, it's actually not a public discussion, it'll just be the five, five of us and the student refs as well, to the extent they want to participate, that will be discussing it at that time, and we'll see where it goes, but I would expect we'll make some sort of determination at that time. So with that said, anyone have any public comments? Feel free. I think if you can state your name and, I guess, address, please.
Sure. Beth Slote at Four Longview Drive. So my name is Beth Slote, and I'm a parent in Bo. I also have a junior in this high school, I just had one of my kids grab, my son is now a freshman, my other son is a freshman in college. We've been in Bo since my youngest was in second grade. I'm also, I started in Bo School District working here as the assistant librarian at the middle school, and I'm now a certified K-212 librarian with a master's in education in library media. I work down in the Hudson School District. And I want to speak first on collection development to try and answer some of the questions that were posted on the town page. First, as a librarian in a large middle school district, I have over 750 kids in my middle school. I purchase somewhere around 1,000 books a year for my library. A library is a living, breathing space like a garden, it has to be cared for for books that are not read and need to be weeded and replaced. We have students who come to us and ask us to plant books, I mean, they come to us and say, will you get this book for us? As librarians, we don't just wander into Barnes and Noble and pick books. We use professional reviews such as Kirkus School Library Journal, Book List, Publishers Weekly, et cetera. Genderqueer is rated by all those sites for high school, even Common Sense Media, which is a highly conservative parent and student review site, has it as high school and above. We do a lot of research before we write books. Genderqueer at my high school has gone out several times, it also went through a challenge similar to this process, and it survived the challenge. I was on that committee. In a few, cisgendered students are not the ones reading this, they believe my son, Alex, I have it sitting there, he had zero interest in reading it, that's not who the book is written for, it's written for children and students who need it. These students may not have supportive, supportive parents at home, they may not have a place, someone to take them to the school library, they may not have someone to take them to the public library, this may be the only place that they can get the book. There have been many quotes taken out of context from the book. If you read the text, you know that both people are over the age of consent, second to main, then the book is actually put off by the experience and doesn't enjoy it, doesn't enjoy it. How many students in high school, I would ask, have read Game of Thrones, or have watched Game of Thrones, or show like The Last of Us, where there is content that is actually way worse than three panels in a book? I have read multiple comments on the town page saying that the book is accessible to 12-year-olds. No, it isn't, it's not in the middle school, it's a high school book, it would never be in the middle school, it's for 14 and above. How does one person select a top 10 controversial book and no one else in the school management team knew about it? Because that person is a certified librarian with a degree who understands collection development. How does a book that clearly violates New Hampshire law find a place in our school shelf? The book does not violate the law, in fact, it's already been litigated in US District Court in Virginia, and was found to survive the challenge of Miller versus California, which is the test they get put to. Why does it take one person to place a book on the shelf yet it takes a formal complaint of committee of five in the school board to remove and rebuttal to remove it? Because it should not be up to one person to tell others what is okay to read or not to read. The library is a place for all, so all should be representative. If your student brings home a book you don't approve of, you can talk to them about why and have them return it. I've had students come to me and say, this book is immature, okay, let's find you something else, that's how it should be. I also want to say that I would like to ask the challengers, why are the books you are going after only diverse books? The next book's being formally challenged is called Beyond Magenta, it is not a graphic novel, it's a text-based book. It interviews kids who have transitioned or come out, it isn't graphic. This book doesn't end banned book banning, it's just a start. The school board put in place a committee that produced a 43-page in-depth report giving every answer to every question about why the book should stay. If the school board overturns that decision the next time this happens, and it will happen, we will be back having the same argument. I've also seen that librarians were called some very vicious names on that page. We are not pedophiles, we are not transsexuals elders, we are not groomers, we are simply giving our students the ability to learn about others, to develop different ways of thinking, to enjoy reading, and if a student is unsure of who they are and feels alone, if they maybe see themselves in a book, they know they are not alone in this world and things get better. Please do not overturn the committee's decision, or we're going to be back here again. You put your faith in that committee, you trust that committee, you trust that committee to make the decisions. It was made up of educators. Please don't stay with the committee decision, keep the book on the shelf in the high school.
I'm trying to figure out, I'm sorry everyone, figure out how to navigate this. My name's Jo Swenson, Eight Longview Road is where I live. I grew up in Bo, born and raised in Bo, I went to this high school, I am gender queer, and let me tell you, it wasn't easy. It was a difficult time for me, I was here from about 2008 to 2011, and I had no representation in the school library or anywhere in the school, and I think seeing that would have been invaluable to me. I have read Genderqueer now as a 28-year-old and seen things in that book that represent my experience that I did not know anyone else felt. I felt seen by this book as an adult who has explored my identity fully. It is very important for people and children to be able to see themselves represented in books. I'm also just going to reiterate what Beth said, I am about four classes away from graduating with my master's in library information sciences. Librarians are very well-trained in how to pick books, we have to take classes on how to pick books, it is not a one-person decision. Like she said, librarians pull from all areas and different trade publications. I'm also just going to mention the ALA does have a library bill of rights, it's very short, I'm going to read it real quick. One, books and other library resources should be provided for the interest, information, and enlightenment of all people of the community the library serves. Materials should not be excluded because of origin, background, or views of those contributing to their creation. Two, libraries should provide materials and information presenting all points of view on current and historical issues. Materials should not be prescribed or removed because of partisan or doctrinal disproof. Three, libraries should challenge censorship and the fulfillment of their, and the fulfillment of their responsibility to provide information and enlightenment. Four, libraries should cooperate with all persons and groups concerned with resisting abridgement of free expression and free access to ideas. Five, a person's right to use the library should not be denied or abridged because of origin, age, background, or views. Six, libraries which may make exhibit spaces and meeting rooms available to the public should make such facilities available on an equitable basis regardless of the beliefs or affiliations of individuals or groups requesting their use. And seven, all people regardless of origin, age, background, or views possess a right to privacy and confidentiality in their library use. Libraries should advocate for, educate about, and protect people's privacy, safeguarding all library-used data, including personally identifiable information. This is what the American Library Association says is the rights of users at the library. I want to remind you, the library users at the high school library are not the parents, they're the students. Having a system where the books are set aside where students can't access them without parental approval is violating their right to privacy. There are students who need access to this material, affirming access, who do not have parents who are supportive, and it is violating their privacy to make them request parents' permission to access these books. There are plenty of students who will not get access to it because it's hidden behind this bar, even if a parent approves of it, how are the students going to stumble upon it? We've talked in library school a lot about browsability, which means being able to browse the shelves and find the books you need even if you didn't know you needed them. So in conclusion, please listen to all of the professionals, the librarians, the many library trade groups that have deemed this appropriate for high schools, this is not about issue, this is something that is in high school libraries across the country, and has been deemed appropriate by many professionals for high schoolers. Thank you.
My name's Ryan Johnston, I live on Branch Londonberry Turnpike East. I just want to voice my opinion, I don't think it's wrong to have books about gay, trans, transsexuals, all that in the library. I still want my kids to be able to see pictures of a strap-on getting inflated. The pictures in the book are gross, I don't even know why we're talking about this. There could be books with pictures, books with words, whatever, pictures, gross. If I have a high school kid, they bring the book back to my house, an eighth-grade kid, what's the difference between middle school and high school then? They can all see it. The innocence that these kids should have, they should hold on to it for as long as they can, they don't need to see how to give a blowjob, they don't need to see it, they're kids, leave them alone, that's it.
My name is Ale Terrier, I live on Mona Lona Road. I am a senior at Bo High School, I've been in this district since seventh grade, this is my home. And if you, anyone here has kids in the high school, you know we see worse on the daily, we hear worse on the daily. I apologize for my language, a dildo and a vibrator are not the worst things we see, right? The things people doodle in their notebooks, right? It's the same. This is not a hyper-realistic book, right? It's a cartoon, it's a handful of panels. And honestly, I'm a big reader, I love books, I like reading, I like graphic novels, I like all kinds of books. And this is the best example of consent and communication and healthy relationships and boundaries I have ever seen in a book. Okay? And like a lot of other people have said, representation matters, representation saves our lives, right? We have gay students in this school, we have queer students in this school, transgender kids, questioning kids, non-binary kids, we have people who are figuring out their pronouns, they don't know what words fit them, they just know they're not the same as everyone else. We have people in this school who are, they're still figuring this out, and books like this help them in a way that not many other things can. If you are a person who, you're straight, you're white, you're cisgender, you've always seen yourself represented, right? You can pick up any book and there's a straight, white, cisgender, heterosexual man. But have, there are so many books who you don't see it, you have to look for books with non-binary characters, you have to search for them, you have to search for queer relationships, and most of the time they're not written well. Right? So having a book like this, it's a true story, and we can, we see ourselves, right? We can't push this under the rug, we can't hide from it. We're here, we're queer, and this is our home. And so like Beth said, librarians know what they're doing, they have a degree in this, they've done this for years, they want to help, they know their audience, they know what they're looking for, and we trust our librarians. Our librarians at Bo High School are some of the best people I've ever met, and in the whole Bo School District. They always want to help, they want what's best for us. We trust them, we like them. If you've never been to Bo High School, you don't know them, you know them as a face, you know them as a name, but you don't see that, you don't see how much they care about us. They're not putting these books in the library to hurt us, they're not trying to expose us, say, hey, I think all of our kids need to know how to give a blowjob. No, that's not what they're doing. Right? This Genderqueer here at Bo High School, this challenge, is the first book to be challenged at Bo High School in at least 15 years, and I believe in the entire existence of the school. Right? So that's 27 years. And it's the first book to be banned in New Hampshire, and I don't know the exact number, but it's a very long time. If this book, if the school board overturns the committee's decision and removes this book from the shelves, that's how we're going to be known as a school. It's going to be Bo High School banned this book, and that's not a good legacy to have. Right? That's not, that's not how I want this school to be known. I like Bo High School, I like it here, I am proud to be from Bo High School, but I, that will change if this book gets banned. I like it here, I like our library, and I want this book to stay. For the sake of my friends and my classmates, and everyone who's come before me who didn't have access to this kind of representative stuff, and everyone who comes after me who's going to have to deal with the heat that's building in this community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Varna Landry. I've lived in this town since 1987. I brought my copy. It's not available at the Bo, at the Baker Free Library, I looked, I think it's available on Overdrive. Four years ago, I had a questioning youth and their mother living with me, and I took the youth to the Baker Free Library, and there were some books about a similar subject, but, so there is some precedence of having it in town. I read this book within the, as a parent, as a pediatric nurse, as a person who is very concerned about the mental health of our youth. And I quickly went to Trevorproject.org, it's a resource for LGBTQ youth, and some statistics from the site said that LGBTQ youth are more than four times likely to attempt suicide than their peers, studies from 2019, 2020. There was a national survey done by Trevor Project in 2022, it was a survey on LGBTQ and youth mental health. Forty-five percent of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year, including more than half of transgender and non-binary youth. That's concerning. And what I want to say, when I, what I, the main message I got from this book is that the author had this incredibly good relationship with their parents and their sister, and it's very respectful, the way the author's journey is portrayed. And my takeaway, if somebody was reading this book, a child, they might find relief as well as being encouraged by the author's journey to talk to their parents. And so I urge Bo School Board to keep this book in the library. Thanks a lot.
Hi, my name? My name's Jennifer Flecker, and I'm from Sixth Branch, Londonberry Turnpike, and I'm not sure that it matters how long I've lived in Bo or any of those other things, I do have multiple degrees if that matters, since everybody thinks of those. Anyways, to respond to some of these claims, I've also seen that the book is rated for 16 and a 5, and obviously high school has children that are younger than 16, and the age of consent is 16 in the state of New Hampshire. And do we have to actually ban the book? Can't we just control it? I mean, and if somebody does have mental health issues over this because they're questioning or something like that, or they feel alone, or they feel like they can't go to anybody, can we not keep this in the school psychiatrist's office so that they can seek out help? So that they can find the help that they need, so they can have the book, they can talk to somebody, they can do those things? Anyways, that's my response to some of these comments that we've had. What I did want to say is, I'm sorry if you're offended by any of the language that I might say here, but I would apologize for it, but this language is what's allowed in this very school by the principal, Mr. O'Connell, and the librarian, Mr. Dixon. I have two points I want to make. The first is, I wouldn't sit down to watch explicit shows like True Blood or Orange is the New Black with my teenager. Maybe she's sheltered, but I'd rather have her to be sheltered than to be overexposed. She is however very embarrassed to talk about medical procedures or actions that pertain to sexual activity. I would not want her to learn from a book or a friend who has the book to show her the images and be like, hey, look at this. I don't want that to happen. The images such as, and I quote, blowjobs on page 62, 167, and then the images are on 168. Masturbation on page 62, 63, 64, 136, 139, 142. They also talk about vaginal slime and show pictures of that on 62, 63, and 64. My second point is, this book talks about checking out books from the, from the library and having physical sensations just from reading. What are they going to do when they see the pictures?
Elena Busmas, 39 Hampshire Hills Drive. My daughter is a junior at this school right now, she's not here, she's at the first robotics competition. My daughter is queer, we do not have a problem with that, we are very supportive. My daughter is part black, and my daughter is adopted. She's already alienated in this school district for being of a different race than 95% of us, and she has to deal with comments on a regular basis about being adopted. She has to deal with comments about being gay because my daughter is very openly gay. We're very proud of her for that, that she is who she is, and she's not at all, under any circumstances, going to change that, but it doesn't make the fact that she is othered across the board for who she is different. This is Bo, this is the school district that everybody is fighting to get their kids into, this is where our property values are really, really high. I don't know how long that's going to stay that way if we start banning books. And if we're going to ban this book, what's going to stop us from banning Winnie the Pooh, because every character in that has a mental health issue? Winnie the Pooh's a bit slow, Piglet has severe anxiety, Eeyore's depressed, Rabbit is OCD, and Christopher Robin hears voices because he thinks they're all talking to him. So depending on how you look at it, you can twist anything to be something that can be banned, even as innocent as Winnie the Pooh. As for the lady that preceded me, if you think your kid has not watched WAP or anything else of that sort on the internet, yeah, you've got the wool over your, your eyes on that. Well, her friends at school do.
Can we not make a personal?
I'm sorry, I'm just pointing out, I discovered, because I have a really good relationship with my daughter, that starting in fifth grade, the F-bomb became a very common word that I was shocked to find out the fifth graders were saying. I was thinking that was going to be a high school thing. What you, what you may think your child does not know about or is not doing, chances are they are. Chances are they've already got this information, and it's better for them to have it in a respectful format than for them to be getting information from random other students. This is respectful, and if you don't want your kids to read the book, discuss that with them. Tell them what your views are on the book and that you would prefer they not read it. But don't remove it from circulation for students like mine and others who have not come out yet, who have questions and are afraid. They're not going to go to an adult and a student, you know, in the psychology building and ask themselves, they're not there yet. But this is a way for them to get that information and to be comfortable with that. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Thank you.
I'm Peter Remsey, live at 609 Page Road. I wasn't going to speak tonight until this afternoon, I was thinking about the meeting, and I decided I couldn't stay away. I'm not sure if it's an original idea, I remember learning once and hearing the phrase that censorship is the last gasp of a failed idea, and it really rang true with me, whether you're talking about politicians, forms of government, religions, political parties, cults, or whatever. It's an admission by those in charge that their ideas can no longer withstand reasoned discussion and debate based on the facts, and as a result, they have to prevent their members, the citizens, whatever, from learning about alternate ideas so that they don't realize that the existing situation is no longer tenable. You can call it what you want, but the, these book banings that are going on now across the country, and certainly this particular one we're talking about, are really nothing more than censorship. The advocates are saying, we don't want our students to learn these things with which we disagree. And I'm here to say, you know, that's the exact opposite of the attitude we ought to be having as educators and especially in our town. We ought to be teaching them, I mean, you know, you all know, how many times have you heard critical thinking? Sometimes, you know, these buzzwords get used so much that they lose value. But what is critical thinking? Critical thinking is looking at all the facts, looking at all the arguments, evaluating them, comparing them, comparing them to your own life experience, and then making reasoned judgments as to what you've learned and what you think you want to do with that information. If you only have half the facts, you can't possibly be an intelligent decision-maker and an intelligent critical thinker. And if we take away anything that might offend people from our library, from our students, we're going to be putting out students who will be one-dimensional and ill-informed citizens in our democracy in the future. You know, I've seen all the arguments about, you know, from your parents saying, you know, we have a right to control what our parents see, and I'm going to be repeating what some folks have said already, you know, and I'm glad to hear that the students have already said it, you know, in this day and age, you know, that kind of thought, you know, I don't want to be insulting, but it's laughable. You know, the kids, the kids today have 24/7 access to all sorts of sex and violence, inappropriate behavior, inappropriate language on TV, on streaming service. And I'm here to say, you know, that's the exact opposite of the attitude we ought to be having as educators and especially in our town. We ought to be teaching them, I mean, you all know, how many times have you heard critical thinking? Sometimes, you know, these buzzwords get used so much that they lose value. But what is critical thinking? Critical thinking is looking at all the facts, looking at all the arguments, evaluating them, comparing them, comparing them to your own life experience, and then making reasoned judgments as to what you've learned and what you think you want to do with that information. If you only have half the facts, you can't possibly be an intelligent decision-maker and an intelligent, critical thinker. And if we take away anything that might offend people from our library, from our students, we're going to be putting out students who will be one-dimensional and ill-informed citizens in our democracy in the future. You know, I've seen all the arguments about, you know, from your parents saying, you know, we have a right to control what our parents see. And I'm going to be repeating what some folks have said already, you know, and I'm glad to hear that the students have already said it. You know, in this day and age, you know, that kind of thought, you know, I don't want to be insulting, but it's laughable.
Keep them out of the drugs app.
The kids today have twenty-four-seven access to all sorts of sex and violence, inappropriate behavior, inappropriate language on TV, on streaming services, on the click of a mouse, and we're not raising the ruckus about all that. Two weekends ago, our grandchildren were visiting. We went online to find a movie to take them to. There's not a single G movie playing in the area. They're all PG, which means they all have sex or nudity or violence in them. And so what, you know, what has been said already, you know, you may think you're controlling what your kids are looking at, but the kids have access to all of these materials. They see what's going on. If they're not doing it in your house, they're doing it at their friend's house. If they're not doing it there, they're finding a way to get it. And you're just eluding yourself if you think that they're not getting access to these types of materials. So, you know, from my way of thinking, what better way to convey this information, as one of our earlier speakers said, is to provide this information, the subject matter, in the context of the school, the educational environment. That way, and if the students have a comment, they have questions, they know they've got an environment where they can seek someone out to get adult input, help with the subject, perhaps for guidances to further topics. To tell you the truth, I'd rather we stock more controversial materials so that we better prepare our students to go out in the world rather than less. Challenge them, expose them to different ideas, have them read different thoughts and different processes so that they will be better citizens as we go forward. And I'm not even going to talk about that. You folks, I just, in closing, I just urge our board, keep challenging the students, keep teaching them to be critical thinkers, keep exposing them to different ideas and viewpoints, and keep our focus on education and not closed-mindedness. Thank you.
Good evening, Anthony Foot, Three Log in Hill Road. And I just wanted to take a quick second to respond to some of the comments about what Peter said. I think his last bit was, it should be in the hands of professionals. I think that was part of the discussion before, that if the book was in with someone who was able to deal with the mental health issues and not let them go home on their own and do these things, it might be a better place to put it. I kind of wondered, you said there was no movie that was G. Did you guys go to see another movie?
No.
No.
Watched like one hundred and one Dalmatians.
My point, exactly. So because it happens doesn't make it right. And some parents have values that they want to uphold, so that doesn't mean you should just dumb water down the soup because you think it's okay, because you can't stop it anyways. I'd like to think that we, as educators, as parents, seek a higher role. And there's a time and a place, you're right. And it's not book banning. I don't think anybody here is telling you to ban the book. I think maybe if they're going to listen to it, they're going to say, can we put some controls that allow those that don't want it freely open to their kids, that they don't want to be close to it, that they can actually work with the school so they don't have that freedom? Anyway, I don't want to go too far, like we're going to run over time and watch it. So I don't want to take away from everybody else either. So anyway, again, I'm Anthony Foot. I'm here to speak as a concerned parent for my two children who are currently enrolled in our SAU, and also to speak as an ad to get for the children everywhere. Protecting children is neither a Republican or Democrat or even independent issue, as we all have a duty in this country to protect the most vulnerable and valuable citizens which represent our future. A genderqueer contains graphic depictions of minors engaged in sexual acts of fellatio, minors masturbating, pictures of Plato's Symposium, which depicts a naked man, full-grown man, erect, reaching out to touch the erect penis of a naked boy and taking the picture in context. Everybody's been saying, take it in context, so I try and take it in context. As a parent and advocate for children, it is critically important that we protect children from sexual exploitation, to educate our town citizens and ensure that we all, as well as the elected officials, are complying with the laws of the state of New Hampshire. Now let me be clear. I do not advocate banning books. I'm not here to speak about that. And I don't ban books that involve LGBTQIA content. It's not my position. However, if a book encourages children to engage in sexual acts when they are not of legal age, are not appropriate for public school libraries where children are encouraged to explore. The laws of the state of New Hampshire, RSA six forty-nine eighty-three, possession of child sexual abuse images. Define sexually abusive material, commonly referred to as child pornography, as a sexual depiction of minors, a child, someone under the age of eighteen. The only reason that genderqueer doesn't fall in that category or fall short is a loophole. It's a cartoon. If it was actual images of the people, the police department would arrest it. So we've got a loophole in this book that we probably ought to look at. And if you want, you can reference that with the computer sex crime and the local PE, and there's an RSA six forty-nine eighty-two in that one. Child protection laws of our state, child sexual abuse images, six forty-nine eighty-two, and a Child Protection Act with one sixty-nine C three, define these things as child, meaning any person who has not reached his, and I put in there her eighteenth birthday, child sexual abuse means having, and this is not the whole thing, I had to cut it down for short brevity, having a child assist in any person to engage in any sexual explicit conduct or any simulation of such conduct for the purpose of producing any visual depiction of such conduct or other form of sexual exploitation of children. Again, with respect to the definition of sex abuse, the term child or children means any individual who is under the age of eighteen, which in this book they are. The sexual abuse and exploitation of children robs our victims, their victims of their childhood, irrevocably interfering with their emotional and psychological development. Ensuring that all children come of age without being impacted by sexual trauma, which is horrible, or exploitation is more than a legal issue, it's a societal issue. This is not just being a LGBTQ issue, which, as I said before, I'm not against genderqueer. The book is just too graphic, and it's sexual illustrations of children engaging in these acts. The content clearly exploits the sexuality of children, and by the book's own accolades, Genderqueer received the Alex Award, which is given to top ten books written, right in there, for adults that have special appeal, which sounds kind of creepy, to ages twelve to eighteen years old, which, as we discussed before, clearly defines a child. The content of Genderqueer is so graphically and sexually explicit that Facebook prohibits displaying illustrations along with Twitter and Amazon. If you don't believe me, go on the Amazon page and try to pull up the pictures that we're contesting tonight. They aren't on there. You won't find them. Over the last few months, there have been press conferences, I think probably people have heard Ron DeSantis in Florida. He held a press conference. National news covered the event, and a national debate on this very subject we're having tonight, and the national news wouldn't put the images on the television from Genderqueer. Our own Bo community page deleted the images that were on the page. I mean, what more do you need to say? The fact that I must come here tonight and plead for decency, for moral values, to appeal to common sense, to plead to you to do the right thing, to protect our children, is appalling. And even more appalling is that the organization you have listed repeatedly, the ALA, in your book report refuses, flat-out bans placing any restrictions on Jage appropriate material. How is it we don't have an issue? We're rated. We talked about movies, you couldn't go because it was rated, but our books still got a rating. And you can't put one on it by the ALA's, I think, Ms. Swenson said it was the, I referenced...
I don't know if it's Swenson, so I don't know what you're talking about. You're talking about the American Library Association Bill of Rights.
Bill of Rights, correct. And they basically say you can't put a rating on a book, which seems to undermine us as parents, our ability to tell our kids what we can, if they can and can't look at. Everything else, movies, music, video, video games, adult magazines, comic books, they all have ratings, but nope, you can't put it on a book. In closing, and I'm not saying, again, not banning books, not trying to hit on a community of anybody else, I'm saying in closing, I offer the following, and I call it, I know, the middle ground. Pending the outcome of tonight and a follow-up meeting, which I hope we can get, and I've talked to Dean because this is an outstanding right-to-know request for some information from the review board, I'd like to sit with them after and review that and have some questions. I mean, I got fifty-nine or so questions just on the first report, not including the two responses directly to the individuals that filed the IJL request. One, could we place the book, or all seven of the contested books, in an age-restricted section of the high school library, to be issued only under the trained supervision of a professional, someone with a degree in mental health or dealing with the issues that these people might be addressing? Someone who can understand what's happening, what they're going through. Implement a parental approval process, much like when we do the sexual ed classes in school, that says, hey, what do you want? Those parents that have children that are under the age of eighteen and don't want their kids to look at the book, would give them some way to control that so they don't have to go, oh, don't worry, your brother's got it at home. That's not right. I shouldn't have to. It's just, that's not the right answer. We're supposed to be proactive and responsible as adults. Develop a book review process prior to inclusion of the library, which includes input from parents and taxpayers, not just the school librarian, however qualified he is, he serves the community, the people that pay the bill. And he should be requesting from us, what do you want in the library? Not just putting it in there because he's a highly certified individual. And finally involved, as I said before, trained professionals in the management of these controversial books and implement safety measures for those children who are signing them out, looking into their gender identity, since use of hormones, gender modification surgery, prescription medications, and other associated procedures, all presented in this book are extremely hazardous to a child's well-being. It's called, to be quite honest, irreversible damage. And it's a book that should accompany, again, it's a book also that same name, is a book that should accompany its mandatory reading for the folks that are signing it out. We do not want to allow, and I reference this as a Second Amendment supporter, a loaded gun to sit on the bookshelf of our public schools without any safety measures in place. Because God forbid a student took that book and did something without the support of their parent or a trained professional, and then we were looking back on it going, wow, we failed. So please, look into that further for us.
Hi, Deb MZ, six oh nine Pedro. I just have a question. How many times has this book been checked out at a library?
Five. Last time it was five.
Five, thank you.
In three years.
In three years.
In three years.
Hello, I'm Pamela Vista, and I live on Woodland. I generally try to stay out of town controversies, but I felt I needed to speak up on this one. I agree with some of the points already made, but I am coming more from the view of a mother as well as a former law enforcement professional with considerable training in child sex abuse, grooming, advocacy, and effects of trauma. I have also worked considerably with ICAC, which stands for Internet Crimes Against Children. First, as a mom, I would ask that you consider carefully the fact that all children are created differently. This book includes graphic images of sexuality as well as images depicting intense psychological pain. Almost more disturbing for me were the images depicting this person's trauma and emotionless scarring graphicness. I have it here, but I'm guessing you've seen it, the one with the sword, like the long sword up through the person's middle section. While one of our daughters wouldn't be affected and released by any of these images, another of ours would be deeply affected. I would ask that you consider the real effects of secondary vicarious trauma. Vicarious trauma is a process of change that happens in some people resulting from empathetic engagement with other trauma survivors. I understand that not all high schoolers would struggle with vicarious trauma, but the facts are, other minors do. Secondly, as a parent, I do not believe that any adult has the right to expose my minor children to such explicit images of any type without my consent. Grooming of minors often starts in exactly this way. Grooming often starts with an adult slowly exposing a minor to words and images that slowly break down a minor's resistance to boundaries pertaining to their own sexuality. We have multiple laws protecting minors from exposure by adults to sexually explicit images and material for these very reasons. Hence why many of us are asked, sorry, hence why many of us are taking on this fight of maintaining the right to protect our own children from adult exposure to this or any book containing or depicting sexually explicit images. I feel this book belongs in public libraries or bookstores or online shops or even a counselor's office. While many may call me overprotective, naive, or what have you, as I've heard, I personally choose to protect my minor children from material books, apps, sites that have the potential to expose them to adult content. On the same hand, I stand for each parent's right to expose their own children to whatever sexually explicit or exploitative material, apps, books, they so choose. This book is one person's account of, at least parts of it are, their accounts of traumatic events in their life. As a mother and former law enforcement professional, I strongly feel that a book with the possibility of having such a strong impact on minors should only be available to minors upon a parent's consent and/or a professional's recommendation that a specific minor would benefit from this material, not readily available to all minors in a setting that cannot guarantee a parent's consent for their minor to be exposed to material that, last I have heard, was rated eighteen plus. I was told that at the last meeting, someone was outraged, and I've heard it here again tonight, that anyone thought it was okay to censor anything in a public school setting. Haven't we been censoring materials for minors for years? And shouldn't we all stand for censoring material that is inappropriate for minors? Having witnessed the horrific trauma and scars left on minors from sexual abuse and the failure to protect children from sexual predators through multiple different avenues, I'm always saddened that the concept of censorship/protection involving minors isn't taken very seriously. Please protect our rights and our right to protect our children from exposure to explicit images if we choose. I do not think that a school library is the place for material containing any sexually explicit images, no matter the source or the, no matter what your sexual identification is. This is a choice that each parent has the right to make, not any other adult. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Judson Malone, seven Oddly Divide. My wife and I have four children in the school district. Our oldest is twelve. She's going to be coming to this school next year, and I don't think it is okay to have pornographic images in our school system. I believe it is my right as a father, her right as a mother, to introduce topics and subjects that are correct for our children when it is time for our children to deal with them, not when the school system believes it to be the case. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nicole Foot. I live in Morgan Hill Road. I'd like to start off with a review committee. What I find interesting with the appeal process is the committee is composed of the people who placed the book into the library, the principal, the librarian, gender studies teacher, another teacher, and a PTO member. So we already know it's three to two. That's like putting a murderer's parents on the jury. They will, without a doubt, find reasons for the murderer to be set free. The committee should have been composed of non-bias town residents picked at random. I would have volunteered, but I'm guessing they wouldn't have picked me because they know how I stand, and the same should have gone with the committee. The review committee says many times over that the images and text may be considered inappropriate by some and/or make a reader feel uncomfortable, especially when taken out of context. The committee found that this is not pornographic because it's not actual images. If it were, it would be classified as pornographic. The fact that it's not an actual image of people but a drawing doesn't change the fact that it is inappropriate for children to be viewing. This is the high school library. These children are fourteen to eighteen years old. I had no idea these children were mature enough to not be taking these images out of context. As an adult looking back into my childhood, I'm imagining if Johnny got this book in his hands, showing everyone at the table the pictures. I know we wouldn't have decided that it was best we read the book in its entirety before we continued to look at the pictures. I'm confident this would be considered out of context. There are twenty-one comparable books that could be in the library that do not have sexually explicit material that this book has. I brought this list of books with me when I met with Marcy and Dean. Why aren't all of these books in the library? And since when did the school become the voice of my child's sexuality? Hormonal teenagers have enough pressures in life. The school putting this type of material on the shelf is like saying it's okay to be performing these acts at this age. If it's okay in the school library, it must be okay. Another point I'd like to bring up is that this book shows pictures of oxycodone, which is a narcotic, and if used inappropriately, highly addictive. In what world are we prescribing a narcotic to a child or saying it's okay to use without first trying Tylenol or Advil? The school should not be suggesting that. The National Institute of Drug Abuse, the development that I read off the website, it's NIDA dot NIH dot gov. Genetic and environmental factors interact with critical development stages in a person's life to affect addiction risk. Although taking drugs at any age can lead to addiction, the earlier that drug use begins, the more likely it will progress to addiction. This is particularly problematic for teens because areas in their brain that control decision-making, judgment, and self-control are still developing. Teens may be especially prone to risky behaviors, including trying drugs. I think this book should be removed off the shelf. They can get this book at the public library if needed. If you insist on keeping this book on the shelf because you feel it's not pornographic, then it should be held with the school counselor. This is not a book for all children ages fourteen through eighteen. This is only for the most mature, who will not be taking these pictures out of context.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Fellers. I'm a taxpayer and parent of Bo students, with an S. So I basically feel I'm stuck in the middle between the genderqueer crowd and the traditionalists. It's It's pretty similar to me when I go to the voting booth and have to choose between a dementia chief or a narcissist-indicted jerk. But I have been very vocal about getting the traditionalist views in this setting because, quite frankly, many in town are fearful of the repercussions of speaking out. It's very similar to what happened during the masking of our children, or the peer pressure and ultimately forcing of people to get vaccinated by government mandate. The biggest complaint I have is really just the fairness of the entire process. The fact the committee was made up of the librarian who chose the book, the principal who was in a union leader article saying the book was educational, two parents, or two, sorry, two teachers and one parent. I mean, even if you agree the book should be in the library, it's obvious the process or committee was completely ridiculous. And it's a black mark in my mind for Brian. He should have stepped out and recused himself from the whole thing. It would have made it a lot easier. The committee in their review are constantly talking about the value of having an alternative point of view in the library. And I agree. That's why I don't think the book should be banned. But there should be an alternative in the library, on the shelf, next to the book. So when a child goes to choose the book, they also see an alternative book with a different perspective on the whole issue. Now, this is a book I have suggested. I have had the superintendent read this book, and he is now on record saying the book has opened his eyes. And he's now reconsidered and reevaluated his position. Now, I don't think I've ultimately changed his position, but he's thought about it. And that is exactly what should happen if a child wants to take out gender queer. They should have the ability to see this book and understand that there is another point of view. And it's a well-researched point of view. It's basically talking to transgendered individuals who have gone through the process and now regret the process. And they feel like they were pushed and prodded towards that direction, and now these children are sterile. They had their breasts removed in a lot of cases. They have infected arms because the doctors basically take the foreskins off of these children and create penises for them, and then they put injections into these things. And it does not ultimately make them, these individuals, happy. It in fact causes incredible depression and a lot of suicide rates. A person came up here and talked about the suicide rate of transgender people, and it's true. The suicide rate is much higher than the regular public percentage. However, suicide rates have been rising for the past twelve years across all demographics. And it's not just impacting transgender children, it's also impacting heterosexual, gay, whatever it is, children. And it has a direct correlation to the rise of social media and screen time and phone time. A lot of these children are told, mommy and daddy doesn't have time for you, here's this phone, and go to town and entertain yourself. Well, guess what? It's rising to major suicide rates in this country. It's not just transgender children. Someone mentioned Game of Thrones. I don't let my kids watch Game of Thrones, and my child's a sixteen-year-old and eleven-year-old. So I don't let my children use social media either. I don't know if you've seen, there's a documentary on Netflix, it's called Social Dilemma. And basically, they're interviewing software engineers who created TikTok, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, every, all of them. These engineers are highly sophisticated, smart individuals. Well, guess what? They don't let their children use the same products that they created, and they left the companies because they couldn't live with themselves about how much damage it was doing to young people. Someone mentioned the school district and how property values, I've heard this several times now in town. First off, the impact of house values has to do with interest rates being held below three percent for a long period, at zero percent, I'm sorry, for very long periods of time, which causes the price of real estate to go up and other assets to go up because the dollar is declining in value. I bought a house in Bow in 2016, and I paid the same price from the individual who bought it in 2007, and he put fifty thousand dollars' worth of work in the house. It's not just the school district that causes house values to go up. It's nice, it helps, but it's not the only thing. It's monetary policy. But I digress.
Kyle, can you address us and the crowd? It's us that you should be addressing.
Okay, I apologize.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
My sixteen-year-old has never used the F-bomb in front of me, and my eight-year-old has not used the F-bomb in front of me as well at my house. It's not tolerated. I do hear a lot of people claiming that people that do not want the book in the library are a bunch of bigots. Just because they have different values than you doesn't make them a bigot. It's ridiculous. The other thing I've heard is diversity, equity, and inclusion. And this is something that I'm hearing quite a bit from the school itself. Now, diversity of thought is not in the lexion here, lexicon here. It's not diversity of thought, it's diversity as long as you believe what we tell you to believe. Equity is replacing equality. You've got inclusion only if you accept the ideology that they want you to accept, not your neighbor's right to agree to disagree. And we've seen this with the Twitter files. The government has been censoring alternative views on this subject because they don't like it. It's ridiculous. Anyway, I want to end this with just a few quick questions on the same topic for our incoming superintendent, Marcy. You don't have to answer it now if you don't want to. I think it would be telling if you don't, but do you believe that biological boys have the right to choose a girl's locker room to change for sporting events? Yeah, Kyle, that's not part of the agenda tonight. And do you believe trans drag shows are appropriate for the Bow School District without informing parents? Why don't you send those to her? And what policies does the school have to inform parents that their children have come out as transgender? Will you notify those parents if that happens? Those are some of the questions I'd like answered. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else have any questions? Comments?
Hello, I'm Sarah Aberton, I live at thirty-eight Alvin Road. And my personal feeling is this is a slippery slope. Once you start to ban one book, or remove a book, or put restrictions on a book, it's not gonna end there. It's just gonna continue to be a rolling problem. But I wanted to just say that I ended up having a discussion with my boys about the controversy around this book. We own it, we have it, we've read it. I have a twelve-year-old and a fourteen-year-old, which are actually below the recommended age, but we read it, and we discussed it, and we discussed some of the controversy. And I just wanted to kind of comment that, for one, there's definitely some misrepresentations that still continue tonight, and I'm not gonna go through all of them, but it's clear that some people have read the book and some people have not read the book. But when talking with my kids, and I have permission to share their thoughts, the first thing that came to them was that these were consensual adult characters that are portrayed in all of the sex acts. There's nothing between a man and a little boy, there's nothing that, the sexual acts are not with children, they're in grad school. But consensual was the first important thing that my kids both said to me. And the other thing is that, you know, they're talking about sort of the controversy about the use of the word vaginal slime. And to my kids, they were like, it's a mucus, just like a booger. Why are we not able to talk about boogers? It's not a big deal. I guess the point that, and I'm trying to kind of get you to think about is the fact that this is not an issue for our kids. Our kids are dealing with this okay. This is an adult issue, and it's adults trying to put their ideology onto their kids. I think it's important that, you know, our kids are recognizing and having good conversations with their peers, they are open and accepting of different views. They actually are in a much better place than we probably are as adults in this town. I want to kind of end, one of the things when I asked my boys about the book, they gave me their feedback, and both of them agreed that it's not a book they would have read if I hadn't have brought it home, said, look, here's a banned book, we have to read it. But something I found was very profound was, my oldest said, there are people I care about that need this book. It should stay in the library for them. And I'm just gonna say that one more time, that there are people he cares about that need that book. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Artie Flecker, live on Sixth Branch, Londonderry Turnpike West. Sorry, it's a mouthful. Just wanna say, I think that there should be equal rights for the LGBTQ community as well as those who don't fall in that category. For me, as a parent, my daughter's thirteen, we have rules and regulations to raise her how we want her to be raised. That's what parents do. I don't want the school board or the school doing that. I mean, I was vocal a couple years ago when we had the masking, and we were talking about opening the school as soon as vaccines were available to kids, and it was parents coming up and saying that kids were gonna die and doing all this extreme, if they don't get the vaccine, your friend might lose their friend, which was ridiculous. I'm not against the book. I don't like the images. I have the book, you can't get it at the Baker Free Library, so I bought it on Kindle, and I have it on my phone. So I know there's a lot of rumors and one side hasn't read the book, they've seen two pictures and they're up in arms. I'm not up in arms about the book per se, it's the images. Like I said, my daughter has regulations. We don't let our children, we have adult children, do things that we wouldn't have done as children as far as being exposed to sexual items. I do believe that if somebody wants to read that book, it should be available to them. I'm not saying that we should call the parent immediately and say, hey, Johnny just checked this book out, and it's got two guys sword fighting, and I mean literally, against a dragon, like, I don't care, right? Maybe it shouldn't be that extreme. But there should be something that if someone, like especially the book, was trying to find themselves, and that's what I got from the book, they're trying to find out who they are personally, as well as their gender and sexuality, all right? That's a struggle. If they have that concern, they should be able to go and get that from a guidance counselor or whatever. And maybe they don't have to be so open about it, but if the book is there and they can say, hey, I know you're struggling, or it seems like you're struggling, maybe you can read this, and here's another book that can show you some other ways of thinking. I mean, I just think we should be open about it, but the images to me are what drew me to this meeting. I mean, I would offer to put that book in print myself on my own dime and bind it without the pictures. I mean, I'm just trying to see that there should be some way that if the kids want to access it, they can, but somebody who picks it up and flips to page one twenty-seven doesn't see some graphic images. That's my sense. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Christopher Linz, Rand Road. Unapologetically a parent. Contrary to the wild narratives about my motivations for submitting a request for reconsideration, the simple truth is that a parent who feared community blowback for challenging this book asked for my help. Sadly, based on my firsthand experience, her concerns are justified. This book contains inappropriate graphic images that I and many others feel are inappropriate for a school library. The pictures in this book cannot be shown on TV without fogging or pixelization. If the graphic illustrations in this book are inappropriate for television and violate social media community standards, will the school board please explain what makes it appropriate for our school library? The context of our discussion tonight is not about our private homes or our public library, where I feel this book should be. But instead, the contested location is our school library. There is a notable distinction between a school library and a public library. A school library's primary function is to support the school curriculum and provide resources for learning and research. So I asked the school board, what specific curriculum does this book support? What lessons does this school board want our students to learn after reading this book? A book disappointingly void of life lessons learned by the author or her recommendations to seek the help she wished she had. A bookmark, by the way, as the review committee recommends, is not the answer. What research are our students doing for which this book would be a library resource? This book had been checked out of the school library only five times in approximately thirty-four months. This fact undoubtedly suggests that it is not a resource supporting any curriculum, so why did Mr. Dixon put the book in circulation in the first place? How does this book meet the selection criteria, or does, quote, "other appropriate criteria", end quote, provide sufficient cover, placing the burden on the public to protect our children, which I presume you were elected to do? I am dumbfounded to be debating the status of a book in a school library illustrated with graphic sexual images that cannot be shown on television, violates social media community standards, and does not support school curriculum. Yet until Michelle and I put a concerned parent's spotlight on it, it was checked out five times over approximately thirty-four months. If this book were written word only, I doubt anyone would have checked it. But it isn't, and therein lies the concern. As previously mentioned, notably absent from her memoir and that which would be educational content are the storylines about adults helping her with her struggles or the many lessons she learned throughout her journey. The author is navigating her struggles solo, and in so doing, making what I believe to be poor choices. I do not want our children reading this material and making similar bad choices. Suggesting that an unborn child is a parasite and/or unwanted is not what I want our school-age children to read and absorb. Do you? Modeling opioids as a tool to help navigate stress and anxiety is not what I want our school-age children to read and then do. Do you? Finally, the review committee references context sixty-seven times on forty-three pages. I am pleased that the review committee also finds the graphic illustrations offensive. However, I am puzzled by how these same offensive illustrations suddenly become acceptable under the camouflage of context. Vulgarity does not require context to be vulgar. Award-winning vulgarity is still vulgarity. And vulgarity has no place in any context in a school library. In what context is oral sex acceptable in our schools? I would encourage the school board to seriously consider the possibility that high school students will not engage in this book cover to cover. As others have said, instead, they will most likely experience it like any other comic or illustrated book randomly entering and exiting its pages. If true, how then does the concept of context apply? I would argue a reader's context cannot be controlled or assumed. Normalizing adult behaviors in our children is wrong. The author wrote this book as an adult. The author wrote this book as an adult, for adults, complete with adult-themed triggers. I refuse to pave the path to inappropriate content because our children, they have already seen or heard it elsewhere. That would be analogous to approving a subscription to Penthouse in the school library just because the kids have probably already seen worse on their phones or the fifth grade playground. In closing, I now task you with the sticky part of elected office. You have heard from several people from various perspectives and you must now make a choice. The easy choice is to endorse a biased review committee finding in favor of keeping graphic sexual materials in our school library because one man in a community of thousands decided doing so was the right choice. The more challenging decision requires courage. It requires courage to know with confidence that by removing this book from the school library, you are not disenfranchising anyone. Alternative sources abound. But rather, you are shielding our children from what arguably conflicts with New Hampshire RSA 571-B:2-Roman #1. Is offensive material to many and is not supporting school curriculum. Therefore, please remove this book from school library circulation. Thank you. Any other comments? Go on once. Oh?
I introduce myself again. I'm Ayla Courier. I just want to respond to a few comments that were made. Being LGBTQ is not a mental health issue. It does not warrant going to the school psychiatrist. These, our guidance counselors are amazing. Our school psychiatrist is amazing and they are here to help us if we need advice. But they're not here to cure. They're not here to push you away. "Oh, you're gay, so I'm going to send you to the secret gay book section over here" that we keep hidden from everyone else who hasn't come forward and said, "I identify as this." Being gay is not a mental health issue. Being transgender is a mental health issue. Discrimination and bullying and fear and homophobia cause mental health issues. This book does not encourage anything except being yourself. This book is one person's story about how they found themselves. This book is not saying, "This is how you have to do it." This book says, "This is how I did it." One person already asked this. This book has been in the library for just about three years. It's been checked out about five times. This is not a super highly-read book, right? And like Beth said, the people who read this book are the people who need it, right? The title is very clear about that this is a book about someone's finding their gender identity. There's no confusion that that's what this book is about. If you read the back cover, it says it point blank. This is not a memoir about finding yourself. People who need this book and who decide to read it, they're the ones who need that story the most. And our teachers, our librarians, our administrators, they do have degrees in this. They know what they're doing. This is a public school. It serves the community. It serves the entire community. It serves the LGBTQ population. It serves the Democrats and the Republicans and the Conservatives. It serves the atheists. It serves the Christians and the Jews, which means all viewpoints are going to be here. If you want to control the things your children sees, there are private schools and there are homeschools. A public school is not the place for that level of control. This book is being challenged for sexual content. That's what's on paper. And maybe that is truly, truly the only reason people want this book out of the library. But no one, and especially our LGBTQ population at Boe High School, which is not as small as many parents would like to believe, they're not going to miss, we are not going to miss the fact that this book is LGBTQ-centered. That is the main theme. And the second book has been challenged. Beyond Magenta is another nonfiction story about a transgender person. None of the students at Boe High School miss that fact. That you're banning it for sexual content, you're also banning LGBTQ stories. And many people are not at the point where they can say, "Hey, I'm questioning, I'm going to go to my guidance counselor and tell them that." Because there's in other states that don't say gay bills where administrators and teachers and guidance counselors have to report that kind of thing to parents. A lot of people in this community, a lot of students in this community aren't safe. They're scared if their parents find out that they're questioning. Like, for some people in this community, it's dangerous. We have a GSA at Boe High School. I run it. It is very sparks of popularity. We do not have many people. We are, the GSA is a huge place for support, for education, to support the community, to learn about yourself, to meet other people who share your experiences. And many people don't feel comfortable joining it, not because of the space we create, but because they're scared of pressure from their parents to say, "Hey, I need you to pick me up because I have a GSA movie night." They're scared. They don't feel comfortable telling their peers, "I can't hang out during flex time this morning, I'm going to GSA." They don't feel safe doing that. And that is because of things like this, the fact that we even have to have this conversation. Again, maybe we're not banning this book because of the LGBTQ content. Maybe it really is just the sexual content. But that's not what people are here. That's not what we see. And I say that as a student who has talked to other students. I've talked to my friends, I've talked to my teachers about this. No one's missing it. One person mentioned the difference between equality and equity. So I'm just going to define those two words. Equality is where everyone is treated the exact same way. Equity is where everyone is treated, everyone gets what they need. Equality, everyone gets the same. Equity, you get what you need, right? And one person also mentioned that the book Irreversible Damage is about transgender people who regret transitioning. And of the people who have medically transitioned, 99% of them do not regret it. Of the 1% who do, half of them say it's because of the social discrimination and bullying that they have faced because of that.
Do you have a source you could cite for that 99% figure?
Put it out right now, so it's not the time to do that. Also, if you are of the crowd who say that sexual acts don't belong in high school, have you met high schoolers? Many people, not all, not all. Many students in this school have engaged in sexual acts and do so regularly. There are students in the school who were in long-term committed relationships. There are students in this school who are in abusive relationships, who have experienced sexual violence. If you look at the results of the last two youth first behavior surveys, it's on the rise and it is very sad. I have friends who are scared walking down the hallways because people in this school have hurt them. So these things, they're not problems for future us. They're our problems already.
That's pretty serious.
Our librarian, he is a community member. He does serve the community. This is Boe High School. He is the Boe High School librarian. The greater community does not check out books at Boe High School. They check out books at Baker Free. So while he is a community member, his main duty is to be Boe High School community. I'm a student. My friends and my classmates, we want this book to stay. Some, most, the majority of students in this school don't care one way or the other. They don't. They didn't know this book existed. The ones who do care, they want it to stay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. Marcy, welcome to Boe. Seriously, I don't know anybody who's been more welcoming to you. Really glad to have you. Matt Poole, as a town slightly, I threw my notes away. Six months ago, I came to you guys, the board, and asked you guys to review the process that was involved in this book. I'm not here about the book. I'm here about the process. One person decides what comes into the SAU and then it takes a committee of five, which was just recently challenged. I understand. And then we're here tonight because of this to challenge that decision. So I'm asking Bryce, what have you guys done in the last six months when I challenged you back in October to look at the process?
We haven't. We haven't done anything on that.
Do you intend to?
I'm sure at some point. We'll see what, I mean, Marcy really will be with, as the new superintendent, when she comes along, I know one of the things she said she wanted to do was look at all of our policies and procedures. So I would imagine next year, maybe, maybe something, I mean, of the, there's a lot of policies, so.
Yep. Marcy happy to work with you on that? Again, I'm not here about the book. I'm just here about the process. It's just seemed like a weighted, a weighted process too heavily in the other direction. And I appreciate what you guys do. I appreciate you being elected official and what you have to go through. As you know, we've had our challenges too. So anything I could do to help, I'm happy to help. I just think the process needs to be reevaluated. Thanks, Bryce.
Ben Canari, Fanger Drive. So lots of great arguments all around the room and I think there's a lot of its distraction. I think most of it's distraction. I see this as an issue about a parent's rights versus the educational system's rights. At what point does the school not involve itself in trampling on a family's rights to set the level of morality for their children? The only issue I have with this book are the images. I think it's a great book. I think it can help people. I want it to help people. That's a serious question. Where does the school's right to trample on parental rights end? This book just happens to be divisive enough across the country. I'm thinking, some parents are thinking it crosses a line and I hope that you think it crosses that line. I do like some of the ideas that were posed about this book being available to students. But even on that note, there are other books that don't have the images in them that do a good job. And there are other resources. And the school is not the end-all-be-all. There's a whole world out there. People can access it. I want you to take the time and consider, are we trampling again on parental rights? You are teachers, you are administrators, you are people who are elected to oversee the school, but these are our children and we get to decide their morality. I think we're about to step over that line. Thank you.
My name is Melanie Courier. I live on 1211 Montalona. My daughter spoke to you tonight. I just want to say, I'll keep it very simple. I absolutely, as a parent, support this book and our school system at the high school. I have appreciated the role that all the educators have played in her development to get her to the point where she could come up here tonight and tell you how she feels, how her friends feel. She's explored this topic from both sides. She's written about it in the school paper. And I am just here to ask you to please do your jobs and to please not ban a book because you think that, it's not even you that thinks that, that there could be something inappropriate. Because I promise you, books have inappropriate things in them. And whether it's this library, the public library, it's up for the child, as the person earlier said, to develop those critical thinking skills. And that is what the school is doing, is helping those children create those thinking skills to know how to interpret something. And I would hope that parents have good relationships with their kids so if their parent, if their child reads something or sees something, whether it's social media or from a book, they will then come talk to them. That is what my role as a parent is. So please keep the book in the school. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
My name is Katie Barrow. I live on Pedro. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but after hearing all this, I feel like I need to speak up. With all these ladies and gentlemen sitting in front there, I heard people saying that those are people we selected. We need to support their job, whatever their decisions they're making. One thing I want to say is, if those are people we selected, we support their job, but when they're running these positions, I, personally, I maybe met one or two of those people sitting here, but I did not know they were going to have a sexual image book in the school library that my kid will have access to. Also, I wanted to say something about, somebody mentioned, sorry, I just drew blanks, about, I don't remember. Sorry. I want to introduce myself a little bit. As you can tell, that I am not originally grown up here, not born here. I come from a country that there's no such thing called the parent's right. I was belong to the state. My parents can give me food, give me clothes, but they cannot decide what book I read, what I learn at school. I belong to the country. I was born up teaching, telling me I am the flower of the country. The country is the garden. I do not belong to my parents. I come to this country for my own American dream. I feel like I didn't have to let my child experience what I experience. I believe, I'm not here to tell people to believe what I believe, but I want those people thinking that they just need to know about what I'm thinking. I do believe that God sent those children to us. I should have the right to let my child have access to whatever we want them to look. As far as, oh, I remember now what I was going to say. Some people mentioned that, oh, they talked with the kids about this book, but after they think, went on Facebook, that the parents brought the book home, have the talk with the kid. What happened if, like, my son went to school, read the book at the school? A teenager kid, I don't think they will tell everything that they read this book at the school. They don't tell me. And without talking with the parents, they think, oh, if the school thinks they have the sexual image in school is okay, they would think, oh, I can go out and have sex with whoever. I do not believe that. Another thing I want to, I don't remember what I wanted, but just if you guys were sitting here, just want to take numbers, how many people support, how many people don't support? I think that's mainly your job is, is to speak for the people who selected you. So I want to put my vote to the one, I'm not saying banning the book, but I want this, I'm not voting on it. I want, I do not want my child to have access to this book in the public school. You can get in the public library or store, whatever he want to buy as he's 18, whatever. I have no control over that. But in school, a place I have, a place that I shouldn't have worry about sending my kids to, that I should trust the school that, I don't remember what I can say. But what I'm saying is, I do not want this book in the public library, school library that my son will have access to. Thank you.
Well? This is one question, this is for short. If I show hands, is there anybody in here who wants the ban, the book banned? If I show hands right now?
There is.
Don't do it.
Keep your hand, you book. I don't think it works.
All right, show a hand, how many people think a bunch of people want the book banned?
All right. All right, we're done with the public comment. If the board's, oh, okay.
Go on. Go on.
Well, no, I was gonna suggest we just move this agenda item up.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll all wait.
Now, catch your Jenna.
I guess it'll take a five-minute recess. All right, we're going back in session now. So we're gonna, we're gonna move around the agenda items and just go right to the book, the book discussion and the media review committee appeal for the book Gender Queer. So I think if one of you can make a motion to adopt the report and then...
I'll make that one.
Okay. We have a second. And then we'll have a discussion on that and then we'll vote on that and that will be indicative of how we feel on the book issue. Any of you wanna go first?
I'm happy to go first. In all fairness, I am an educator myself. I work for the Concord School District, so I see firsthand every day the struggles that many of our children are going through. I think it'd be great, in my opinion, to say, let's put this in a special area, or let's have someone sign it out. But the children that need it most are not gonna be the children that do that. So for me personally, I think that I'm okay with the way the policy, the committee went through, that they wanna keep it on the shelves. And I do think if students want it, it's there. If they don't want it, no one's forcing them to look at it. So I'm okay and comfortable with the way the policy is written and the way that the committee came back with their decision.
So I read the book in November, when it first was challenged, and I had a few, few emotions about it. And I think Bo should be a place of diversity, equity, inclusion. We follow, we find strength in diversity, we find strength in inclusion, we learn from one another. I have a family member who's part of the LGBTQ community, and he was shunned as he was growing up, and I wish he would have had access to this type of book. And it certainly would have made his life a whole lot easier. And I think the most vulnerable people in this district need this book. And for that reason, I completely agree with the findings of the committee.
So I too read that book. I would also say that I read this one. I do believe that we need to educate ourselves. I'm a teacher as well, and I have had a lot of meetings with parents that have been tough. And what I hear from the people that are for it or for against it is fear. Mr. Linz, you said that this is an easy position for us to be in. And I'm gonna tell you, if we vote for what the committee has said, my daughter, one of her best friends, has spoken up against it. And I will say that another friend's parents have spoken up for it. We are not in an enviable position. And to have somebody come here and say that you voted for us and that they could just replace us, yes, you can, that's called democracy. But I will say that when I come up with my decision, I really do hear what everybody says. I think we all do. This is not easy. And you can laugh at what I'm saying, but it is sincere. I am having to navigate this with my own kids. I have twin nine-year-olds and a twelve-year-old. And she, you know, my kids don't have phones. My kids don't have access to a lot of the electronics that other kids do, for that exact reason, because there's a lot out there. But at the same time, I can't deny that I'm sending my kids into a public school. And there are times that I'm not sure I wanna do that, especially with mass shootings or any other thing that comes along and I don't know how to handle it, because being a parent doesn't come with a book to tell you how to do it. But at the end of the day, I have to talk to my kids, and I really hope I'm doing the right thing. And I'm honest with them, and I say I might not have all the right answers. And that's what I'm gonna say here too. But the idea that when I read this book, the thing that broke my heart the most was that this person spent 20 years lost, because they didn't have any resources near them that said, this is what I'm going through and this might be what you're going through. And they could see themselves in something. To lose decades of your life because you're lost, or years of your life because you can't see yourself represented, has gotta be so challenging. I haven't had to deal with that. So I really do feel that this committee did a fabulous job of breaking it down. And I feel that this is something that we have to do as parents, is have these tough conversations with our kids when they see stuff on the internet or in the schools that challenge them and challenge us.
I'll be fairly brief, but I will say that I just read this book recently. And I honestly didn't know a lot about transgender. I, I actually work as a healthcare professional, but I don't have a large transgender population. And I read the book and I was very, I learned a lot. It opened my eyes. I didn't realize, I mean, I think I knew there were struggles, but I guess I didn't realize how important it is to feel that there are others like you and that you feel connected. And so I also had seen the pictures just out of context and had a feeling about them and whether they were appropriate in a school. And when I read the whole book, front to back, it was such a small piece of the book, not a piece that you would, you would have to look for it, and such a totally taken out of context, in my opinion. If you read the picture before and the picture after, it was basically saying that they, they didn't enjoy this, didn't, like, it was a consensual relationship and it wasn't meant to be pornographic or anything like that, in my opinion. And so for me, I feel like this book could help people, kids, high schoolers, probably more than, I guess what I feel like is, if parents have a real issue with their children seeing this material, and I truly believe that everybody should teach their own values to their children, then they can tell their child, please don't take out this book. I don't want this, this doesn't agree with our family values, this isn't something that our family agrees with, we don't want you to look at this book. I think that having it available for the people that maybe are afraid to ask or aren't aware, you know, of how they're feeling or are just looking for some education, I think it's important to have it available to them, more than it's important to sort of, I guess, protect family values of some people, because they can have those conversations at home with their kids, probably easier. So I, I really read through all of this, I thought about it a lot. I, this book to me is educational, it's helpful, and it's meaningful, and I, and I agree with the committee's analysis to say that I don't feel it's pornographic, I don't feel it's inappropriate. So my vote is to agree with the committee.
Well, Jenna said she'll be brief. I'll be pretty lengthy, actually. I have a habit of doing that, I think. But this is gonna be a long, meandering way to get to where I'm going, so bear with me. I wanna walk you through my process, though. So this came to us as a board, I don't know, October, November. We were leaving at the end of a board meeting and someone from the administration said, oh, by the way, there's gonna be this challenge coming about this book and it has X, Y, and Z images or discussion in it. And my initial reaction was, what the heck are you talking about? Why in the world would that be in the library? Was my initial reaction, without knowing anything more about it initially. On the school board, you get bits and pieces of the school. I mean, there's so much of the school. There's, there's a lot of areas you just, you just don't deal with on a regular basis. Library, we never talked about once, and as long as I've been on, on the committee. And so when I had that initial reaction, I was thinking of Judy Blume books and things like that. And, I mean, there, there was nothing of that nature in, in the library when I was a kid. And so I, my initial reaction was just, that doesn't make any sense. But pretty quickly after that, I learned that apparently there was an effort by the far right on a national level to get a number of books like these in front of school boards and banned, or something along those right, along those, that side. And that really frustrated me, because I felt like, well, why are we wasting our time doing something like this? So the next thing I did is I looked at the policy. And when I started to look at the policy, I said to myself, we just put this policy in, isn't that a coincidence? And then I thought a little more about it and I thought, well, that's weird to have a coincidence that out of the blue, we always, all of a sudden have by far the biggest policy we have in the school system is this 15-page policy. We don't have anything else like it. And so I was frustrated with the far left, because clearly the far left had made an effort then to put a policy in place that made it tough to sort of overcome. I will say, as I've read that policy, I'm actually, I'm fine with the policy as, as I read it, but that wasn't a coincidence either. And so that frustrated me. And then it frustrated me, because I do have two kids in high school. I know a lot of high school kids. Anytime in the last six months, I've kind of poked around about this issue, none of them know anything about it, they never heard about a book banned, they never heard of this book, they're not involved at all. So again, I was frustrated, because to me, I thought, well, it's just a bunch of adults fighting over something that the kids don't even care about or know anything about. And I also thought, all these kids have phones, all these kids have access to all these sorts of things. I don't care what anyone thinks. If you don't think your kid's seeing that, you're kidding yourself. I can give you a good example. My oldest kid had a sleepover in fifth grade, and he came home the next day and said, oh, what'd you do last night? And he said, we watched 21 Jump Street. Well, if anyone's seen that, it's like a hard R, like almost an X movie. And he slept over at somebody's house and saw that movie. And I was like, oh, well, I don't want him seeing that, but it happened. I mean, so what can you do? So that's sort of how I started out with this. But then I changed a bit, and I've done a bit of a deep dive into this. We have two policies that do address these issues. We have a policy IGE called parental objections to specific course materials. And so in specific courses, if you're gonna talk about sexual orientation or, or anything of a sexual nature, parents need to be notified in advance. And I know the distinction between the library and that is required courses as opposed to this being a voluntary exercise. But we do make an effort when it comes to sexual orientation to notify parents when that happens. There's a second one we have, which is when we distribute non-educational surveys by state law, two of the subjects in there, if it has to do, again, with sexual orientation, we have to notify parents in advance of doing that. And so those two experiences made me think, well, we are already kind of monitoring this issue in some respects. And again, I get it, checking out a book is a little bit different. But then I thought about, I've had two separate experiences with people, with kids and families that, that really aren't, aren't like ours. I'm an attorney and I had a case with a, with a woman who had been sexually harassed and had a high school daughter. And her and her daughter, like, didn't drink, didn't swear, didn't, they were so innocent and pure, like, I'd never seen anyone kind of like that. And like, they were really delicate individuals and, and, you know, we must have high school kids like that. I had a carpool, we, we have a big carpool here in town that drives a bunch of kids to a sporting event down south. It's been going out for many years. And I drove the carpool one time. And afterwards, the kids said, hey, we wanna go get something to eat. And so we went, and these were seventh and eighth grade girls. And we went to McDonald's. And then, at the time, I had a minivan and I put on Austin Powers, the movie, in, in the minivan for these seventh and eighth graders. Didn't think anything of it. The next day, the parents of one of those kids quit the carpool because of what I had done to their kids, to show their kids these sorts of things. And so there are people out there that are like that, that are very, very sensitive. And one other piece that just recently happened is that Dean, you circulated a survey that showed, it was a breakdown by New Hampshire and by the region and by Bo. And the second and last question in the survey results said, how many kids in Bo High School have seen pornography? And the total was 68.5% of the kids in the high school. The statewide average was 75. And I thought, that's amazing. I would have assumed it was 100%. And so all those factors, again, made me think, well, there are people that look at things differently. And so with that eye, I read the book. And I'll tell you, I kind of like, I think it was Jenna said, this is not a book I would ever check out, it's not an area that I really have much interest in. I waited until the last minute to read it, until it came past the committee. And so I really didn't want to. Somebody, but kind of at different meetings, I thought, kind of mocking it, saying it's a comic book, in a bad way. But then, when I read it, like, it is a comic book, the woman's got a PhD in comic books, basically. It was pretty interesting. And I loved it. I had no idea the world existed out there, like, like the folks that were in the book. I, I just, I had no idea that people had those struggles. It's a nonfiction autobiography. It was this person's journey in life. And I do agree with what Jenna said. I did think those images, when read in context, they were not, it's what happened to this person and that the images didn't bother me as I read the book. And so I was comfortable with that. I pushed the book up against our policy and I said, I think the committee's right, it does pass that policy. I don't see anything that doesn't in the book that would require it to not stay in the library. I also thought, is this policy designed, though, where nothing could ever be banned from the library? And the answer is no. I mean, I did a further thought on that and looked at it and said, no, it's, it's written well enough to avoid that. So I, I do think the book does pass that and should stay in the library. But I do really struggle with what the parents of a number of these folks have said. Almost everyone has exclusively said, my kids. It's been very, very few folks that said, as a community, we shouldn't allow these things for other people's kids. And so I'd be much more comfortable if we allowed parents who don't want their kids to check out something without their permission. Frankly, I think you're probably looking at the universe of those people in town or probably here tonight, would be my guess. But they, I think, deserve the right to be able to say that their kids can't check out a book without their permission. And I, I think that, that, I think is important for those people, because I've had experiences, you know, myself, that I, I think, I think they deserve that right. We do a lot of things for kids 14 to 18 that we restrict kids from doing, and our own kids. And, you know, for some folks that want to restrict their kids that way, I think they deserve that right. And that's sort of where I land on it. The last piece I'll say is, the policy ended up with, the committee said they had some recommendations about the policy. And I actually don't agree with their recommendations at all. I'm fine with the committee, the media committee as it's set up. And the only reason to change that is to benefit us, because whoever submits a request, if it gets through the media committee, it comes to us. And so if the media committee's gonna rubber stamp everything, so be it. I mean, we're gonna end up just having to resolve it. I don't think it, it really makes a difference to anyone in the community, other than the five of us. And then there was some questions about tightening up the procedure and format and all those sorts of things, and I don't like that either. Generally speaking, we try to make our policies as flexible as possible, because, I mean, it would be one thing if you were having to review War and Peace as opposed to, you know, a 50-page pamphlet or something, like, it would be, I would think a very different timeline. So I would reject those. So I'm comfortable with the book. I'm also, if the rest of the board's willing to, I'd like to see a broader position put in place that would allow parents who do not want their children to be able to check out books in the library without permission to be able to sign up for that.
Brian, is there anything in place currently that would stop a parent from saying, please don't let my child check that book out? Do we have to formalize that in a policy? Or can any parent call you at any point and say, please don't allow my child access to that?
I mean, we're entering a new world with that. We don't have, we haven't done that ever, you know, in terms of a library book. I mean, we have, the classic example is if there's curricular, curriculum that, that parents object to, that we, and traditionally, it's the sex education, it's the easiest one to kind of do it. So when we teach sex education in the 10th grade, we usually send a form home where parents can opt out of the entire unit or a particular section of the unit and be given some alternative assignments that are relevant to the course. So, I mean, there's that idea of parent opt-out to some of the things we do. I think what is tricky about this is this is in a library setting where there's an opt-in to it, you know? So we've never really gone down this path before of restricting an access, just because it's never really come up, right? I think a lot of students who... I think a lot of students who, I don't know what students think, but I like to think I know what they think sometimes, is that they're, the students who are gonna read that book want to read that book, and the students who don't want to read it just aren't gonna read it. And then that's kind of where it stands in the library. So, I mean, we're, we want to build a strong community here. You know, we don't want tension. I think one of the things I've been pleased about as a principal, as this has been going on, is it hasn't affected our student body much in the sense of creating a hostile place for students on the whole. You know, I think there's obviously, on any given day, there's conflict between students, but this hasn't consumed our, you know, school committee on a day to day, and that's ultimately what I want to maintain, so.
You know, I forgot to, Trevor or Grace, you guys want to try, don't feel like you have to, whether you guys want to chime in, feel free.
I have talked to many of the other students in this school, and as a sophomore, they were majority sophomores, which is the underclassmen, which are younger in the high school. And though they had many different opinions on whether or not the book should be read, majority of them had wanted their decision to be respected by parents and the school board. And whether or not they read the book had to be their own decision. On the way that Bo High gives out resources and gives the students the choice of whether they want to accept these resources, in my own opinion, I felt like this has been done properly. In our American middle class, we have been learning about genocide. And as a person who has been adopted from Rwanda, I've had a very deep connect, like deep connection or just perspective from the genocide. And they were offering the movie Hotel Rwanda, and through honest conversations through my own parents and my own opinion, I was able to make the decision for myself on whether or not I was able to sit through the movie. I don't think Bo High School is forcing anything. I don't think that the parents are completely not involved in the decision on whether the child could read it or not. Having honest conversations with your child is important, and that's what most students have agreed on. So that's just what the opinion, the overall opinion with the students I've talked to with.
Trevor, you good? All right, well, I guess, do we need to act on what I want? Or do we, I guess, is that independent of the book?
I think it's a lieutenant personally, like, if a parent wants to call up and say, please don't allow my child to check out a book, I don't think there's anything currently in place that would stop that from occurring. So I think we can vote on the policy, or if we're accepting what the committee has said. And if the parents not comfortable with our decision, they can call and request respectfully that their child not have access to that book.
You guys comfortable with that? Okay. Well, then, all in favor of adopting the report as the movement, motion is pending? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it? That's it?